All right, I have six thirty on my watch and usually corresponds to Lisa, so we'll get started. I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees. A meeting to order is Monday, February first. It is six thirty, we are holding this again and continue to via Zoom. There is a link at the top of the agenda for this video and Zoom. It also, there is an audio portion there too with a number to call in and an ID. And again, anything in the meeting is being recorded and including the chat, so just so everybody's aware of that. We'll start with a roll call from Lisa, please.
Alan.
Present.
Limber.
Present.
Murphy.
Present.
Bradcliffe.
Here.
Valencia.
Present.
Vanderwaldy.
Here.
And Williams.
Present. We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. I will pause now if someone from the public does want to speak. That is wonderful, please share your name, your address, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes, so that if we have multiple people, we can get to everyone. All right, moving on, item five is discuss and consider the meeting minutes for our regular village board meeting held on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and a special meeting of the Village Board of Trustees on January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is all in one consideration, so assume we can handle them all at once. Any comments, questions, or edits to those meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Second.
All right, thanks Melissa, thanks Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain?
I'll have to abstain from the second meeting because I was not there.
All right, thanks Jeff.
Likewise.
Thanks Paul. And the motion carries. Item six is unfinished business, and this is discuss and consider the developers' agreement for moving out regarding the Glen Grove Apartments' development.
I can take that, John.
All right, thanks Matt.
We're not ready at this time, we're still waiting for moving out to get back to us on the draft, so. With a motion to table would be just fine tonight.
All right.
I'll make a motion to table.
Now we have a first from Jeff, Troy is that a second?
Second, I'll second that, yes sir.
All right, thank you. Motion to table, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed, anybody abstain, motion carries. All right. We move right on to reports from village boards and commissions and committees, starting off with pure court steering committee. Jeff, that would be you.
Yeah, we met on January tenth at five PM. We had approved the minutes from the last meeting, which would have been on eleven twenty-four. Let's see, Jay was there, Ali was there, and we pretty much just went over the different cases that would have came through this year, but there was, like, we've only had in Cottage Grove one the whole year. And so there's really not a lot going on, they're not even doing really pure court stuff, just because there's just not enough people. Even Sun Prairie had like only a couple, so it's pretty slow right now, so it'll probably be a while before there's much to report for pure court.
All right, thanks Jeff, any questions for Jeff? All right, moving on to Parks Rec and Forestry, Heidi.
Thanks John, we met on the twenty-first and we had a presentation about pollinators and pollinator gardens and the importance in our ecosystem for that and got some good ideas for things we might be able to implement in the future and Trista already has some connections and working on those to perhaps offer some adult enrichment gardening type programs, so we're excited about, you know, expanding in that. We also talked about the park fees and the committee wants to see a proposal for any adjustments we might make to multifamily and other suggested adjustments to the fees, so staff has started working on that. We talked about Red Hawk Park and the future Twenty Acre Park and Red Hawk is gonna start with the playground and sidewalk coming up this spring, so Sean's getting that moving. The Twenty Acres kind of just planned now and waiting for development to happen. And then working on what we want to change with the BACAN future plans based on what we're putting in the Twenty Acre and rearranging financials to, you know, make the most sense of what money we might, where money could be best spent in the next five years. And then tentative date for the BACAN splash pad and shelter opening is June fifth, so you can put your calendar that on your calendars and pencil because you never know where we're going to be in June, but that's kind of what we're planning for. Sean, you have anything you want to add?
No, I think that's it, we're hoping for a large donor, if anybody's interested, we'd like to have Def Leppard perform at at the event, but so far, no luck, but other than that, that's it.
I think you're segmenting the potential attendees by selecting Def Leppard there, Sean. But I'd go.
I've aged myself a little bit.
Moving on then, Dear Grove.
It'd be a parking issue if they show up, so.
Perhaps, we'd bust it in, come on. That would be Troy or Sarah for Dear Grove EMS?
We met on Thursday, the twenty-first of January. And looking at things, calls for this year were down by ten total. Most of the staff that have wanted it have had their second shot of the virus vaccine. There was some discussions on standard operating procedures, COVID nineteen emergency responder paid sick leave, which was passed. Also, and that was extended through May, if I recall correctly. There were some discussions about appointing a subcommittee for collective bargaining agreements, and it was decided to hold that off until May after the election, just in case there may be some changes with the committee commission personnel on that. What else here? We did the chief's review, which ended up, ended up good. Rewarded him for his hard work and a small token of a small, small raise. Next meeting is on February eighteenth, and I see the chief is on, or he was on, is there anything additional? Or Sarah, either one that I've missed?
I'd just add that we began the discussions on where to head with future staffing, so does not make the budget time surprise of a huge ask. And we're in the data collection phases on kind of guiding that decision.
Thank you, Chief, good point. Looking at future growth for all the communities involved and where that might take us in staffing needs, basically.
All right, thanks Troy, thanks Chief. And then moving on then to the NatVig landfill monitoring review committee, that is either Jeff or Paul.
Paul was, Melissa had filled in for Paul on that meeting, I'll take it though. So we met on January twenty-fifth at six PM. We went, the very first thing we did was we went over the invoices from SCRAND. They all looked right in line with everything that it's supposed to be. And then we looked at the monitoring results, the 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 vent that was in question about the methane, the higher levels of methane, gas probe ten actually has gone down quite a bit. But that doesn't, that does not change anything of what the DNR is expecting us to do. The good, the good news is we have, we only have to do six vents, is that correct Melissa? Six vents instead of like the eight to ten they thought, so it will be less. We don't have what that cost is, but at the next meeting, the town of Cottage Grove said that they would have what that, that's going to cost. And then, you know, obviously we'll be working towards getting that taken care of. They said once spring curls around, they'll be able to break around and get those new vents in, so. And that's it.
All right, any questions? Might move on then to the Joint Fire Department Committee, that's Melissa, Paul, or Jeff?
Thanks, I'll take this one. Sarah filled in for Paul also, so. We met last Thursday to go over one big item on there, but as far as other things that we talked about, the chief Archibald let us know that he was able to purchase twelve full sets of turnout gear from the Pleasant Springs and remainder of his budget that was available at the end of two thousand and twenty, so they were able to do that, and they also received a grant from the Gary Sinise Foundation, which covered six full sets of turnout gear, so they have eighteen, replaced eighteen full sets of turnout gear and the, so they prioritized who has classes at M E T C that the chief kind of filled us in a little bit about on Thursday night, that they require that now at M E T C to have ten years or newer equipment. So we got those replaced and the, the only people that don't have new sets don't usually go into fires, they're more of the command base, so they expect though to replace their turnout gear at the end of this year. Also, it was brought up about updating the fire agreement and the town has it on their agenda this evening to discuss whether they want to appoint somebody to be the representative, representative from the town to work with our attorney on the fire agreement. One reason why we had asked our attorneys to ninety-seven this agreement, so Rick had put updated and regulations that no ambiguities in them that really would benefit if we were able to clarify it more so that new trustees or even trustees that have been on a while can really understand what the joint fire committee is supposed to be doing and what all parties responsibilities are. December that future board and committee members could really understand what's going on with it. And there, the other thing that we wanted to do too is the two percent fire dues had come up a couple of times and we had, we have that in this combined agreement, this updated agreement, so that we all know what's going on with the two percent fire dues, so that you know, so that we don't lose those from the state in the future too. So that's the main thing with the fire agreement. And lastly, with the chief's report, they were, we have twenty-one calls in two thousand and twenty-one as of our last meeting. There's thirty-five members with one new person that was interviewed on the twenty-fifth. They're reapplying for the AFG grant, which to replace all of our radios, and there's a couple more municipalities that wanted to be included in that, so there's a big consortium of probably like the east side of Dane County municipalities EMS and fire departments for this one grant and every, everyone's tripping in a little bit to hire a grant writer, so hopefully our grant proposal will be strong and be chosen this year. Chief Archibald had provided us with a breakdown of calls from two thousand and twenty, the village of Cottage Grove had ninety-five, the town of Cottage Grove had seventy-four, and the town of Pleasant Springs had forty-four, mutual aid was forty, for a total of two hundred and fifty-three calls. And those will be included with the minutes for next time, it was interesting because with the villages' calls, twenty-four percent of them were canceled en route and only five percent of those calls were for a fire call, whereas with the town of Cottage Grove, twenty-five percent of them were for vehicle accident, eleven percent for a fire, and nine percent for brush fire with eighteen percent being canceled en route, so it's kind of interesting the makeup of the calls by the fire department to which community, and maybe that's something that can be looked in, in the future, looked into in the future. So that's all I have, unless I miss anything, Sarah or Jeff? All right, thank you.
All right, moving on then to the ad hoc housing task force, that's Jeff or Paul?
Yep, I can take that one, John, thank you. We had our second official meeting here on Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, I felt that it was good content, discussion for that meeting. Aaron came prepared with a recommendation for two thousand and twenty-one chart of works for the committee to consider. Aaron, I had a chance to meet with Aaron prior to the meetings, so I had a sneak preview of it, thought he did a really nice job with that chart of works, presented it at the Tuesday meeting, had detail and themes per the month along with presenters and items to consider. Gave some time for open feedback from the committee members, I think overall felt the chart of works was, looked good, there was some ideas that were generated in that discussion. An example of it would be, one of the committee members had mentioned that Wanakee had done a survey on mapping and asked if we would consider looking at mapping, doing a survey and mappings where suggested housing locations are. And we said that we could do a survey and likely be part of the priorities and goals meeting later in the year. And so there was some feedback for Aaron to, was tasked to taking it back and tailoring it from the feedback for our next meeting, we'll bring forth a final recommendation of approval. We also had Olivia Perry join us Tuesday evening, she is a senior planner of Dane County Planning Department. And she did a presentation. Olivia provided an overview, overview of housing data and issues in Dane County, and there's some good discussion around that after her presentation and some ideas that we can actually bring forth for future agenda items. So that's all I had, Jeff, Aaron, or Matt, am I missing anything or anything else to add?
No, that sounds really good, Paul, I think you got it all.
All right. It's Paul.
I have a question, if I could, thank you. I was just wondering if it was maybe, I know the D E I committee hasn't started yet, but I thought there might be some overlap that maybe the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee could meet with the Housing Task Force at some point in the future, just because there is some overlap there to some degree, I don't know if that was considered at all.
Specifically mentioned, we are, we do have something on the schedule for a meeting on housing discrimination, and that might be a topic where there's some overlap and maybe it could be a joint meeting. It's interesting.
I would think there would be for sure some potential consideration with that, Melissa, for sure.
All right, very good point. I'm hoping after this evening with the nominations, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee can get going finally with a full roster as the board had kind of slated out last, late last year, so hopefully we can get that moving along then. Moving on then to law enforcement, we met on the twenty-sixth of January and covered some, some things, not our normal things, but walked through, the chief walked through the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-five strategic plan for our police department, as well as the draft of the two thousand and twenty-one goals and objectives during the packet, he's gonna, he's got some more tweaking, he said to do that, but regarding, I'll just hit the high, a few highlights and let chiefs jump in here after that. On the strategic goals, if I can get the right piece of paper here. Didn't have their own, overall for the goals for fiscal two thousand and twenty-one through twenty-five, highlights were achieve, again, achieve reaccreditation for the department, continue that. It puts us in a good position with from anywhere from reporting as well as our procedures, leveraging best practices, et cetera, it's a, it's a nice thing to do, it's a lot of effort, particularly on lieutenant, but as well as department, but it's, it's, there's a lot of benefit there. Looking at increasing staffing to accommodate the increase in population, perhaps a sergeant position as well as another officer. Another goal is environmental sustainability. Another one is attain quality hires, improve existing personnel again through training and development. And then develop enhanced department fitness school program, which started last year. And then finally, enhance equipment, technology and facilities to meet future challenges. And then the goals for the year kind of mirror some of these and feed right in. Again, the accreditation is up this year, so that's definitely going to be moving forward. There's some, there's go around technology, increasing participation of the fiscal and wellness program. And then chief is working hard with the county to look and maintain solve rate of violent crimes and property crimes. And I'm sorry, this is what they're working with the county on, the domestic violence officer program, which started late last year, was delayed due to COVID, but there's some really good things that are coming out of there that chief highlighted. Chief, anything I missed, or Troy, or Sarah?
I couldn't think of anything, it was pretty good summaries, John. Achieving and getting reaccreditation is going to continue every three years, we have to document for every, every year and every three years, they come on site and make sure we've done everything correctly, and so it is a full-time, not a full-time, but it is an extensive amount of work that needs to be done every year to keep this an accredited agency, so our admin staff, the lieutenant, the officers, everything, works darn hard on it. So that's, that's an important goal. I think we're at the point now where we need to seriously think about adding another officer, because generally in the state of Wisconsin, there's two point one officers for every thousand. Our population's about seven, about an hour or more, so we only have thirteen officers and it'd be prudent to add another officer in the near future. And Environmental Sustainability Board now has the, the utility interceptors in hybrid, so we should be sustaining the environment by burning less fossil fuels, which is great. And, you know, we want to look at hiring the best people we can, we're doing a hiring process right now, or just starting one and like every police department in the country is experiencing, the numbers are down, the qualified people are down, and we are, I'm not going to say we're going to struggle finding a quality person, but it's not like it used to be where you could put an ad out and get a ton of good people and pick, you know, from there to get a really good officer, it's going to be tough this time around, so. Always figuring out how to hire the best people is, is the long-term goal of ours. Our fitness and wellness program is going well, I'd like to see a lot more people involved in it. And then obviously enhancing equipment, technology and facilities as we go along will be, will be fine, our facilities right now for the police department are, are fine, don't anybody worry that we're asking another police department. But we always have to look to the future and make sure we are ready to go. And then goals, you know, our goals for two thousand and twenty-one are to maintain our property crime and our, and our violent crime solve rate, we, we generally have the benefit in Cottage Grove of when there's a victim of violent crime, we generally know who did it. So, or find out, because we don't have a lot of them, so our solve rate is up there. And, but we do a really good job in making sure that we all solve the property crimes and we're way above the state average and hope to maintain those goals in the future and, and then one of my, my most important goals is enhancing our domestic violence and prevention, and we're going to be working with the county sheriff's department, who has a specific unit that focuses on the victims and getting them out of those situations if possible and protecting the spouses or the victims of domestic violence and the children and giving them the resources they need, so. Those are some of the highlights of strategic goals and yearly goals.
And Chief, you were going to add something around the D E I, I think, training?
Yes, yes, we are going to add that in there too.
Was that in the goals or the first documents that you were going to add that?
Yeah, I thought we were going to add that into our strategic plan and we can put it in the goals also. I think we can fit, we should fit them into both of them, obviously, and quality hires would be goal number four in strategic plan, so we should put it in there.
Sounds good.
All right, any questions for Chief, there's one other item too, but before I forget to move on. So, go ahead, Troy.
Go ahead, John.
I was going to move on to the, the discuss and consider item, so if you have something prior to that, then feel free to jump right in.
The one thing that was discussed is we, the police department has the Crown Vic that's transferring over to Public Works, and there was some discussion about getting a a green light on the top of it for weed commissioner. JJ, just for you, we just didn't know where the money was going to come from, so.
JJ, just for you, we just didn't know where the money was going to come from. So.
I would compress the hat on that one, I think.
Yeah, I, I prefer to do my weed commission duties anonymously if possible, though. I just wanted to give everybody a little laugh today, guys. Come on, work with me. It's the dead of winter. We've had a lot of snow here in the last few days, it feels like.
Everybody is muted or you would have heard quite a bit of laughter.
All right, to be, keep on task here. So Chief did include in here a memo. The law enforcement committee talked about this a few times ago, I think. And now we're making it a little more official as spring to. To wish the snow away. The spring starts to come, come our way. I think it's timely to start discussing this. So. This is to look at reducing the speed limit around the Bakken Park area on Vilas. And currently it's at, I think, forty five. And Chief kind of walks through this along with the, the M S A folks and kind of our options. Originally, when the law enforcement committee talked about this, we were hoping twenty five, but we knew that there was certainly some restrictions on that. And the development across from Bakken hasn't really kicked off. So that is not our determining factor. If we throw driveways in there, then. And we do have more options, but right now the proposal is to, to reduce it from forty five to thirty five. And then work with the town on their little stretch by Clark there to, so we don't really confuse people with a forty five sign in there. Anything to add, Chief, that you found out from discussions with, with the town or?
No, well, yeah, I, I think it's pretty important to get us down to at least thirty five. I, I think there's going to be a ton of traffic there this spring and summer. And it's important when people are doing forty five. The speed limit is forty five. I'll bet they're coming into the village at fifty five and there's no way in heck they're going to slow down in time. Or people coming out of a splash pad and, and there's going to be traffic going in and out. So we need to get it down. We had hoped for twenty five. Brian from M S A can probably explain why we can't go that far without a traffic survey first. But I have talked to the sheriff's department, the, the town police department, which is the sheriff's department. About coordinating this effort with them because they have a twenty, they have a forty five mile an hour stretch just north of Clark Street. To the railroad tracks. And if they don't switch to thirty five, then we have a problem because it's going to confuse the motorists, especially. Traveling southbound from Well Bridge and the railroad tracks through Clark. And then all of a sudden they hit. Before that, it's twenty five and then they hit their forty five and then they go to our thirty five and then back up to forty five. So it's. We have to coordinate this, otherwise it's going to be pretty confusing for motorists. And I talked to the sheriff's department. They forwarded that on to Kim Banigan over at the town. I've had a couple of email conversations with her. I have no idea what they're going to do before they're on board with this. To make this change, but I'm still working on it. So Brian from M S A, do you have anything further?
Sure, I can, I can add a little bit of that to it. I think I, I think it's important to note for the town road in between that small section. I don't, the goal is to have them remove that sign to avoid the condition, not necessarily declare that a thirty five. Because they would have to go through the same hoops that we're going through here to get that now. But by removing the sign is what Chief said, would hopefully. Make that perception that you're going from twenty five and then the next sign you're seeing is the thirty five. So. Because it's in a town, the state statues are a little bit tricky. They're, they're different when you're within the village limit. So I think that's important, Tom. Think distinguish that. The town would just be removing that sign. And I think in the memo too, Chief. We recommend potentially looking into a park entrance sign with an advisory speed. It really is trying to like hit that home. To add a little bit back on to why we're going to thirty five, we're, because we're in the outline districts where the village. It's the rural cross section. It has a set state statute at thirty five miles an hour. The village does have the ability to reduce that. In the future without getting D O T. It's kind of one of those unique statutes that the state established these speed limits. And you have, the, the state has given the communities a little bit of leeway on what they can do with them. If you do a traffic study, but if you go outside, you know, you can't just post any rural road down to twenty five miles an hour. If, if in the middle of nowhere, these people effectively fifty five. So we have the ability to go to thirty five. The reason why we've talked about not getting down to twenty five is we would need to do a speed study. So we either do set out one of the county. Recorders or set up two counts to get speeds. But at this point, until we see almost a change of dynamic and more people out there, we're likely going to see people, as Chief was saying, coming in at forty five, fifty five. And when those numbers come out, we establish speeds at about eighty fifth percentile people are driving at. So if we aren't encouraging and people are, there's no one out there and people are still haven't changed it, even if the speed limit, our data is going to contradict. Our goals of getting that lower. So I think my recommendation was to the chief is. Maybe let's start with the thirty five and then maybe one park users and it gets heavier use this summer. People are used to that thirty five. Maybe we can look at, see what people are driving there and get some justification for enforcement to go in to get it down to twenty five. But I think thirty five is an obvious no brainer at this point to start there.
Chief, anything else to add?
Nope. We just, we do need a village board approval and it would be an ordinance chain, speed ordinance.
Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to reduce the speed limit to thirty five miles an hour on Vilas Road in front of Bakken Park.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and seconds. Any further discussion? Having heard none, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm supportive of everything that's being said. I'm just trying to get a, a visual in my head, Chief. Is the, the main concern coming out of the south from like Sky High Coffee Town area heading. Heading north into Bakken or is it both and? Is it also coming off of Damascus from the north side? Coming through the tracks and heading past Bakken?
Yeah, my initial concern was the southbound and northbound people would be coming the fastest, but. We can easily change that by putting, you know, the thirty five speed limit at the south end of the park. And they will be slowed down by the time they get to the entrance exit. I'm more concerned now with the confusion with that small part of the town by Clark. North of the park and getting people northbound to southbound slowed down in time. Because it could get a little confusing in there if they're still doing forty five.
Got it. Thank you. That helps clarify for me. Thank you.
I did have one other question too. At the end of the memo from M S A, it said. We might want to consider installation of a park entrance sign. Is that something that we should include in a motion? If we do want to do that at this time or?
There's, I, I attached the M S A memo that had memo that has a map on there and we should. Probably go with the signs they're recommending on that map.
Okay. Is that how our motion will go with the recommended? Cause it says. Replace it with the park entrance and. So our motion includes that? I just want to make sure.
Right now it does not. So it just follows the.
We can. I, I'll, I'll go with that. That's no problem.
Okay, and the second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Heidi, good clarification.
John, maybe just like we do with plan commission items to reference the memo. So maybe reference the date of the memo and. In the motion.
Yeah, so everybody's okay with the memo from February first from Chief Labor. Regarding the proposed change, speed limit change. And that also attaches with the M S A memo, which references the location of the sign. Are my motions and seconds still good?
Still good.
Okay. And then Lisa, you got all that mishmash? Thank you. Any further discussion? That was a technical term for a motion. All right, have me, all of us in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Moving on then to ordinance committee and this one also has a discuss and consider. But I'll let Heidi and Paul walk through the meeting first and then they'll circle back to the discuss and consider, I think.
Sure. So the other topics we talked about on January twenty seventh. We had an update on chicken ordinance to have domestic chickens allowed in the village. And an ordinance that updates the fences specifically referring to temporary type fences like a snow fence. Giving the building inspector some kind of. Leniency or authority to. Make sure snow fences are safe and neat and tidy in the village. So. Both of those things have to go to plan commission before we see them for final updates. So those will go through plan commission and then here. We're working on updating the bow hunting. Larry gave us a good summary on that. So we'll see something later on that. And then if you recall, the mobile food vendors that came up from last year and. Aaron came up with a great idea, which the committee agreed that we should create in our ordinance and then a form. That would allow the host to get an annual permit. To host food trucks for the season, much like a noise amplification permit. And then we could lay out conditions for that. That the food trucks should be on their property. They should verify that they've been. They have the correct license from the county because they, the food trucks are required to be licensed through the county and kind of put. All of that work on the host and we would. You know, make that a condition on them having a license for the year. So instead of carving out like all these exceptions and then. We don't want to create loopholes and you can have the permit, just creating this special permit, no fee would be attached with that. And then if there are other ordinance updates within that ordinance that legal team sees. So all of that's kind of laid out in the memo attached for us to consider. Asking staff and legal to prepare that type of form and permit to implement that process.
Heidi, is that a best practice that we've seen other communities use or? Just want to, or are we blazing a trail?
As far as I can tell, we're blazing a trail. The rest of our process is very similar to every other municipality around. Which the fees for that actually vary a lot for a regular, just a food truck that drives around in parks. You know, on a public street. So that's, but it's very common to do the background check and that part is very common. If a place has a farmer's market. It's not required. So that's, it's kind of covered under the farmer's markets permit to host vendors. So, I mean, this kind of is similar to that, maybe.
So Heidi, if there is no host and they are just coming in to have their food truck, they would fill out the existing form?
Yep. And that's, yeah. Pretty, every municipality that I looked up around us has that. So. And our fees were actually very small compared to some, it's like hundred plus. For a permit for a food truck to sell. So the fact that we have a day pass or something is, I think. Helpful for that scale of a business.
And there were some edits, I think, that were recommended on the current form. Would, would that still be updated?
We could still update the current form and translate it too. And there are also in the ordinance, it laid out if a license is revoked, but it didn't. Lay out if it isn't issued in the first, just grounds for denial of a license. So we just want to make it the same.
This is Larry. There's a number of things in the existing ordinance that, those are a couple of examples. It, it really should be. Cleaned up and just so that it's clear to everyone how, how and where it applies and what the consequences are for. For not complying. So we'll, we'll work through and kind of clean up the whole ordinance as part of this process.
Just, just so I understand now, there's a, there's a fee associated with it. And when you mentioned the, the host would spearhead this. There is no fee associated with it anymore? Or, or they would just coordinate and that vendor would pay the fee?
It's taking the work off of our staff because we would no longer do a background check and. File the paperwork on that vendor. So no more fee because all of that work is. On the host. We would, it would just come to the village board like how Dandren's just applied for the noise amplification for the year. So there's not much staff time after things are prepared. It just, the business fills out the application and then we see it at the board. I don't know if that makes.
It, it, it does. I'm just curious why we're, we're going away from the fee involved with it.
Yeah, it was, the fee helps cover the background check that the village does. And that fee would still apply for like a, a public food truck that still comes to the village. And just sells on a, a public street on a weekday or a weekend. So they would still pay the fee for the background check. So. It would just be getting rid of it for this private event.
So the idea is they've already paid a fee through the county or whatever and, and rather than, and, and if the host. X Y Z restaurant, whatever is, is hosting them, being that they've already paid a fee, that's why we're not going to charge a fee for each. Vendor they might have at any event.
Because the, the village isn't doing any work or keeping track of who's there selling. It's the business that's keeping track of who's selling, who they're hosting. The business is verifying that they're licensed to sell food in Dane County. So the. We don't, we wouldn't know how many food trucks, let's say Dandren's has in the summer. We'll just. Say you could have food trucks in your parking lot for the summer and it's on you to be responsible for. Verifying that they're meeting the criteria to sell. So. We wouldn't charge a fee for each one. I mean, I guess we could charge a fee to Dandren's if you thought that we should charge a fee for them applying for that. Annual permit, but the, the committee didn't think it was necessary since there's no like background checks or anything.
So, so there won't be a background check? We won't know who's in the particular food vending, you know, the vendor machine, you know. Trailers or anything like we do now?
Not when it's at a private event. Then Dandren's would be responsible for keeping track of. Who is, what food trucks, their contact information, that they're properly licensed by the county. And we would lay that out in the ordinance in the form that they're responsible for making sure that their customers at their business are safe. Because it's on their private property, rather than selling to the public where we're responsible for the public's safety.
So, so if something were to happen, would we ask them for a copy of the background check that they had conducted them to make sure that that's actually being done? Or are we not asking them to do a background check? I guess that's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
Right, we're, I mean, we could ask them to do a background check, but the committee isn't proposing that we ask them to do a background check. We would ask them to get contact information and keep record of what food trucks were selling at their location.
In a similar manner as if, if they just hired people, you know, the same way as they would manage their own employees.
The trucks still have to be licensed through the county, correct? So. It's not like it's just anybody with a truck showing up. It still has to be a. A vendor that's licensed through the county.
That's how that works, yeah.
And the county does like a food safety inspections on food trucks that are licensed in the county.
And it wouldn't just be for Dandren's. Like I think the pig had a couple this past year or two. Would that apply to like the? Um, would that apply to like the fireman's festival then? Or is that a whole different thing?
That is um actually something that the committee was wondering about and um, we have a committee member from the fire department and he said it would be okay if that applied to the fireman's festival, that they would just fill out that form along with the other forms that they submit for fireman's festival. Or if it didn't have to apply to fireman's festival, that would be okay too. But they already have that information and they would submit it with their other forms. So um, from his perspective, we didn't get an official word from the fire department, but since we have a fire department employee on the committee, that was his thought.
Right. So I'm just wondering, because they have that on a public park, but they rent out the park. So are we, like, is the permit going to be? Like, it's supposed to be for a private um property. But are we going to allow it so that somebody can get a food truck at like the splash park someday to have a big party then? I, I don't know. I just thought of it.
Right. Well, when we host um music in the Grove, we um put in a permit to have noise amplification. And I think also to lift the no drinking in the park if I'm not mistaken. Um, so that's something that the Parks Department could do also and also fill out the form allowing the Parks Department to ask food vendors to come to, you know, Dublin Park for the um for the music in the Grove. And then they would just keep track of the contact information of that food truck. Um.
Well, I meant more for like if somebody rents out, say, the shelter and then they want to instead of using our lovely kitchen facilities there, they want to bring in a food truck instead. But because it's not really a private thing. I think we're getting into the weeds, but I just think it's something that should be addressed is all.
Yeah, I think so too. Um, in the discussion at the committee, we talked about like a block party and that this would be a similar type of thing that a block party could apply for this permit to host a food truck at their block party along with, you know, closing off the street. Um, so they would request that since it's a private event, they're not just selling to the public. Um, but I think that park shelter rental, you know, kind of fits into that discussion, although we didn't talk about that example specifically. Um, but I guess we can weigh in now if we want to add something specific on any of the topics that we talked about so far um to give Larry some guidance on what other things might need to be addressed.
Hmm.
I, I guess I have one other question. Go ahead, Melissa.
I was just gonna say that it's, that I guess it all comes before us at the board level to decide um ultimately if we're going, like with the noise amplification. So I mean, sometimes it's not all, it's all, not all black and white. So like that gives us some leeway or it doesn't have to be spelled out every specific thing too.
I, I, I guess I'm not trying to beat a dead horse with this thing, but, but the other thing I, that popped in my head is, is the historical society. Uh, you know, prior to COVID would have, you know, a, a brat feed in front of the Piggly Wiggly or are they supposed to have a permit? Uh, who would, who would purchase that permit if, if, if there's a cost involved? Um, you know, in, in that case, it's a not-for-profit. Uh, you know, doing that, um I, I almost feel like there's more questions than answers from this conversation. I hate to say that, so.
Um, I, I
Yeah, well, we'll do, what we'll do on this is we'll, we'll put together an ordinance that that covers all scenarios. And it is possible, like per choice question, um just now that there might be a number of different ways that a particular location on a particular day might be able to uh arrange for a, um, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily have to have the individual licensee only on public streets. Uh, you know, I, I think what happens, what you'll find is that, you know, in the Piggly Wiggly parking lot, sometimes somebody will just call and ask, you know, hey, on the summer day, can I come in and do this? And they say, okay, fine. You know, go ahead. Maybe it'll bring more people in to do some grocery shopping. But the, the Piggly Wiggly is not necessarily going to um manage it. It's not for them, right? So then in that case, the, the, you know, Piggly Wiggly doesn't want to be the host. And the person would have to go through the revised and improved normal process. But if Piggly Wiggly wants to see this as an opportunity throughout, you know, the nicer months of the year to have this happen on occasion and be able to bring food trucks in and ice cream trucks and other things and make it much easier on the people who own those vendors or the, the, that do that vending. They can get a host permit and then anybody can come in and do that host permit.
So do we need more clarity on this before we uh even discuss and consider? Does the committee need uh the board to say, go ahead and, and kind of chunk this out and get all the details down?
I guess the, the committee is um, they want to make the process as easy as possible to not create a bunch of loopholes. And it, it wasn't really intended to change our process now that much, but create this new permit for a place like Dandren's to have food trucks. So I'm, I guess that was the intention of the committee and I'm not sure if Larry, after hearing that, some of the questions now, do you need?
You know, I, what, what only thing I can tell you is that as we work through this process, we'll come up with, we'll come up with that many new questions too. And that's the, really the process of an ordinance revision and update is until you really dig in and have these kinds of conversations and then actually try to put pen to paper, you don't really come up with all the questions to answer. So I, I suspect we'll have a host of questions that'll, that'll arise even moving forward. And depending on what those are, you, you know, the nice thing about it is nobody can pass an ordinance with this board. So we, you know, we'll, we'll go through the process. The committee will make a recommendation on all of the questions that come up, have come up and that will come up. And uh, and then we'll come back to the board and at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's all of your job to decide if you answered those questions correctly. Um, or if you want to see some tweaks or changes and it'll be another good uh robust discussion.
So, so looking at this, it looks like he, uh, the committee does need at least the board's um approval to keep charging ahead with this because it's going to be a little bit more uh heavy lifting, I think, by both the committee and, and, and um, and legal. And I think that'll be helpful from what I'm, from what I'm understanding here at least. Unless uh, unless somebody sees it otherwise.
Well, I think our ordinance needs to be updated at this point. I mean, we found that. So I think it's good to um, I'll make a motion to direct staff to add the new process form for a mobile food vendor host permit and associated updates. So ordinance chapter two thirty-nine.
All right, is there a second? All right, second. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Thanks. Good, good discussion. Uh, anything else in ordinance, Heidi?
Um, nope, our next meeting is February twenty-fourth.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, uh, moving on then, reports to, from village officers. First one, I have uh three nominations here. Uh, one for the ad hoc housing task force, and this is uh small business owner to slot in for another, someone who couldn't no longer be on the task force. Uh, the next one is for, our next two are for the um diversity and inclusion uh committee. Um, and that rounds out both from plan as well as from the chamber. And all these fine people have submitted their forms and uh it's up to the board to uh discuss and consider their nominations, please.
I'll make a motion to nominate Kim Sale to the ad hoc housing task force, Andrew Litt and Melissa Radcliffe to the ad hoc DEI committee.
Is there a second? All right. The motion is second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, moving on.
Sorry, can I ask then, are we ready to get the DEI committee started?
Yes. I was gonna send, Sarah was gonna send you a note after this. Yes, we are.
Great, thank you. Note received.
Okay. Just made my life easier. Didn't have to click on the keyboard. And Lisa's listening too, so um we can get started with the agenda and everything, get everybody together and, and get moving forward. Um, uh, moving on then uh to legal. Uh, Larry, you're still with us, I'm assuming?
I'm still here. I have uh nothing new to report today.
All right. Spoken up, tired of talking, right? Uh, moving on then to COVID nineteen updates. I will, th- those individuals know who they are and I'll open the fours to see if anybody has anything that they want, want or need to share.
No report from me.
Yeah, I got a shaking head from JJ. Uh, Sean, I can only see the Cottage Grove Parks and Rec beautiful sign, so. Oh, and then a beautiful sunset shaking his head. That's great. So I am and I think as everybody, we're glad not to hear any reports because usually that means we're talking about something we need to address. Um, so no news is good news in that case. At least that's the way I take it. Moving on then to communication, Melissa, Melissa's business. Uh, first one is to consider the approval of vouchers. Any questions or comments regarding the bill list, the voucher list? Or a motion to approve them?
I'll move to approve the vouchers for.
I'll second.
Melissa's second. Any further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Correspondence, um, other than the Arbor Day, Arbor Day Tree Foundation sixth um note that I got from them for membership that I pass along to Sean every time. Uh, I didn't see anything else. Uh, we did have a few more uh items get signed, some utility easements and things like that for projects. So things are moving along um in that fashion as well this week. Anybody else receive anything that they want to share? All right. Upcoming community events. Is there any building of snow people events coming up? Because that's all, the only thing I can think of right now.
The Optimist Club is hosting a virtual dance party, family friendly. Um, so that part's free and then you can buy a, a swag bag of Valentine goodies for um, uh, youth Valentine in your life. Uh, those cost ten dollars and they go to support the snack pack program, which is an awesome program. The Optimist Club works with the school district to um send food packs to the district um that go home with kids that need food over the weekend. Uh, so um six dollars from each bag goes to that program. Uh, you can buy those through the Optimist Club uh Facebook page.
Thank you, Heidi. Anything from anyone else?
I was just wondering how the um Lions Club thing went yesterday, Troy.
We cannot hear you, Troy.
Shake myself off mute, that helps.
There you go.
Uh, it, it went well. Um, we had a total of nine people at the facility. They were all Lion members, basically um kind of doing it. We post, posted everything on Facebook as far as the winners. Um, I was a loser again this year. And um, um, it went as good as it could have, I, I, I guess, uh, considering everything. Um, I think, I'm hoping that next year we can do the standard um afternoon, two to four of uh um snacks and beverages and, and people are actually there to attend. But uh uh, it's amazing, actually, ticket sales went really fast this year as well. We were a bit worried that uh with the pandemic uh and just kind of position that we need the money more this year than normal because a lot of our fundraising has been nicked um with no parades or anything from last year. So I guess uh, uh, a long story short, it went very well. Thank you, Melissa.
Now we have something to look forward to next year for a coming event.
We sure hope so.
I think we will. All right, um, future agenda items. I think we'll have some stuff out of plan next time. Matt's gonna nod his head, right? Uh, yes. And anything else, Matt, that you can think of or anyone else that we're, that's going to be coming down?
Um, I, I think we'll continue to just keep placing the moving out item on there and, and so it's um un- un- until they tell us otherwise, just so we can be flexible if and when they um, you know, if they would have gotten back to us over the weekend and we were able to turn it around. Um, that, that could still work out. So I'm just gonna keep that going for the time being.
I was wondering, Matt, did you ever hear from an EPA or DNR person about those um emission or? Yeah.
I, I did. Um, we're targeting the fifth week in March. It's just a little bit far off yet to um, but we're, we're working on the fifth week of March. That, that should work. Usually a fifth week works well here with our meetings since there shouldn't be anything scheduled for a fifth week. Um, so that's what we're working on.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, one thing, sorry, that I forgot is um for Lisa, we have a um election coming up, don't we? Is that, did absentee ballots go out for that?
Yeah, so we have the um February primary coming up on February sixteenth and absentee ballots were mailed out last week. So those should be coming in your mailbox if you haven't received them already.
Great, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. Um, and Lisa. Move on then to uh a closed session. So I'll make a motion that uh in this case, a closed session for uh discussion of a potential agreement to offer to the purchase of Purposel Planning LLC for uh an incentive and a land sale and negotiations in tid number five. Uh, the Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five, parentheses, one, parentheses, to liberty negotiating, purchasing public properties in, in the investing of public funds or conducting other specific public business where whenever uh competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed section session. Is there a second?
Second.
I just saved everyone to say a lot. Uh, this is a roll call vote, so we'll turn it over to Lisa.
All right. Alan?
Aye.
Limburg?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vander Veldy?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye. All right, we'll jump on the other one.